It is 8:30 and we are ready to proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners of the ByState Development Agency Board Meeting to order on Friday, October 1st at 8:30 a.m. Will you please call the roll? Myra?
Commissioner Win Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Pastello. Commissioner Golladay.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Chair, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and public for being able to join us on this rescheduled meeting. Myra, I understand there were some public comments. Would you read those, please?
Yes, the first public comment we received is from Gina Becknell. Her topic is service reduction and driver shortage. Her comments are, "My daily rider has not shown up three times in the past two weeks. I ride the 11 between work and home daily. I don't have a car, nor do I have the option to carpool. I rely on the bus in order to get to work on time. This reduction of service and unreliable last-minute schedule changes as a result of the driver's shortage are making it impossible to rely on Metro. Outside of the ill effects on me and my friends that rely on this system in place of a car to get to work every morning, the long-term damage to our transit system in terms of people seeing it as totally unreliable and being forced to run themselves into debt buying cars is inexcusable. I attended a public meeting and asked Tashara Jones what her admin was doing to solve this problem. She told me that Metro is handling it by offering a hiring incentive. But is that really all we're doing in the St. Louis community to get people from A to B? Is that all we're capable of doing? Is this all we have to offer captive riders? Why is the wage for drivers stagnant? Why is the system about to waste millions on turnstiles to attract new leisure riders with a performance of safety when it can't even service its current riders? A budget is a moral document, and Metro's budget shows that the comfort of the more affluent riders it's trying to court is more important than keeping good on the promises made to the riders that currently rely on it and need it the most." The next comment is from Mitch Eagles. His topic is hire more bus drivers. His comments are, "Hello, bus trips are getting canceled left and right without notice. Lines that we reimagined to have 15-minute frequencies are now coming as rarely as once an hour. This severely hurts our ability to rely on Metro, and as a result, many riders are left standing, quite literally, in the rain sometimes. How long do you think it... How long do you think a rider puts up with that treatment before they go buy a car, whether they can afford it or not? I know that none of the Commissioners really use the bus, and the President's job is to entirely focus on security while the rest of the system is stripped bare. But we are begging you, please focus on hiring more drivers. Clearly, whatever you are currently doing isn't working. We need more hazard pay and more protection for operators so that we can attract and retain them. For example, it's kind of ridiculous that indoor waiting areas remain closed out of an abundance of caution due to the Delta variant. Despite that, meaning riders who are transferring buses have to wait outside in the heat or rain, and on top of that, they have to wait even longer, given all the canceled trips. But at the same time, we're not abundantly cautious enough to return to backdoor bus boarding, something that would most definitely help to protect the drivers. Metro keeps our region running. Even though most of you probably don't depend on it, many of us do. If there is one mission, one direction, and it is forward, then why are we moving backwards in so many ways?" The next comment is from Chris Bowman. His topic is bus frequency and driver shortage. His comments are, "Did any of the members present take the bus to the meeting? If so, was your bus on time? If not, you should. Bus service is very bad right now, and you should experience firsthand how difficult it is to be somewhere like a job or board meeting by taking Metro bus. Frequent 15-minute service enacted in the Metro reimagine plan has devolved to 40 minutes or an hour frequency if a bus shows up at all. The proposed hiring bonus is inadequate. Seattle pays their drivers $61,650. Using a cost-of-living adjustment calculator, that equals $40,646. The current pay range at 1,950 hours a year is $33,559 to $58,707. Drivers should be paid $20.85 per hour minimum. Our downtown greater economy and tax base depends on reliable bus service. Thank you for your time." The next comment is from Julie Wish. Her topic is safety and frequency. Her comments are, "I am a regular commuter on ByState Washington University employee as well as the mother of a toddler who loves spending his weekends riding public transit. I am more than satisfied with the safety of the Metro system. I speculate that I would feel equally safe with even half of the security presence that I currently see. I would like to see more resources go into increasing frequency than paying for police and security presence. It seems like Metro is constantly touting increased security presence as a reason to ride, but what would make it easier for me to ride more frequently would be if my bus came more often. I would also feel safer if I knew I wouldn't ever wind up in the situation where I was waiting 20 or even 50 to 60 minutes at a stop because there weren't sufficient drivers to maintain the published schedule. I know staffing is a challenge right now. I would like to encourage ByState to do what they can to pay drivers enough to maintain a full schedule, even if that comes at the cost of security." The next comment is from Carl Mitchell. His topic is also driver shortage. "I firmly believe the reason the company has trouble finding drivers is low wages. A job of this importance and stress level needs to start at $20 an hour." The next comment is from Tim Costello. His topic is fix the buses, please. "I take the bus every day to work, and it keeps not showing up and making me late. People's jobs are already messed up because of COVID, and you will lose customers so fast if you make it harder for us to get to work. You have to hire more drivers. Do a marketing campaign, raise the wage, do whatever it takes to make your bus system functional. Today, my bus home did not show up, and there were at least 10 security guards just standing around doing nothing. Why do you keep hiring people to do anything other than drive buses? Please get your priorities straight and fix the buses." And the last comment is from Benjamin West. His topic is Metro bus driver pay. His comments are, "Transit that runs on a reliable and regular schedule is critical to our region's economy, be it for commuting to work or school, to sporting or cultural events, and even leisure. A bus route with highly irregular wait times approaching 40 minutes or more during daytime hours becomes a route with dwindling ridership, not to mention the vehicles bought with public funds sitting idle for longer periods of time. It is imperative Commissioners maintain the regular schedule of its service and retain its vehicle operators via increased compensation or equivalent."
Thank you, Myra. And I'd like to thank the public for their input. I understand that Jessica Mafford-Miller, Executive Director of Metro, and Talby Roach, President and CEO of ByState, will be providing an update and additional information regarding these issues at today's meeting under the Operations Report. Item number four on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 25, 2021 Board of Commissioners' open meeting. The Board was provided with the minutes for review. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion and a vote for approval.
To move second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes of the August 12, 2021 Executive Committee Open Meeting. The minutes of the August 12 meeting were provided for review by the Board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion and a vote to approve.
To move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the August 20, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The minutes were provided for review by the Board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. I'll turn now to Talby Roach for comments. Report of the President.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Really do appreciate the comments from the public, and I would like to address some of those. However, Jessica will get into more detail when we get to Operations Report as well. But first, let me recognize the absolute fact that it is true. We are indeed missing trips right now. We have a significant employment shortage, as this Board is well aware. And one of those issues to deal with that, of course, is the bonus that you all authorized in an extraordinary way not some time ago. But I will say, as a staff, we are extremely concerned about this. I talk with Jessica about this several times a day, and it is a really ongoing and legitimate concern. However, it is not legitimate to say that we are transferring those monies. In other words, that security is impacting the employment of our operators. That simply isn't a true statement. It is not an either-or proposition. Really, to operate correctly, it needs to be and both. And we absolutely need to concentrate on the employment of operators, and that's absolutely true. As a matter of fact, not only with the bonus, we are not only at the midpoint of pay compared to our peers in the industry, we are actually on the higher level of that scale. And we provide ample opportunity for overtime in our workforce. We're proud of what they... Not only what we pay them, but also of the hard work they do. In fact, wages are not stagnant, and we'll continue to move those along as we did and are currently in the midst of a three-year contract. We intend on signing another contract with our great partner, our great union partners at 788. I would like to note that not only do we have a shortage on ridership, but there's also shortages in the supply chain having to do with rolling stock. I do know that our mechanics group is struggling to keep some of our rolling stock out on the street because of inevitable shortages that we are having in the supply chain right now in this extraordinary time. I just want to be... To recognize the reality of this difficulty. I want the public and the Board to know that we are taking these realities very, very seriously and responding to them, and we are trying to come to you for solutions to these problems. And I want to thank you for the endorsement of some of those solutions, as an example, the bonus. And we'll continue to do that. So I also want to note that we are also working on moving our vaccination rates up. We have been extremely aggressive with trying to move those rates up, and we're going to continue to do that. This includes a bonus program, includes some of our prize patrol activity that has been successful and, quite frankly, fun to do at this point. I'm going to ask Brenda to share the screen right now so we can go over some of the fundamentals of what we are seeing right now in vaccination rates, just as a quick update. As you can see, compared to the area, we are right now sitting at 49% vaccination rate among roughly 2,100 employees. Well, we'd like to do better. There's no question, and we're going to continue to try to do better, especially in given the era of what's happening right now. And you can also see on the bar chart to the right that the effect of the variant in August and September. So we are redoubling those efforts, moving forward on how we have to work with our employees on masking. And we have sent those notices out and have been continued to talk to management so that we are staying vigilant in the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Brenda. I also want to note that you're going to hear today from Kevin Scott and Jim Wallace on the Innovative Chestnut Health Program. One thing that I want to talk about that is a really neat idea is it is, in fact, beyond policing. It is also about service. Service does not always have to be strictly police-oriented, and I think this is a very innovative program, having to do with mental health resources out on the alignment. I want to say that this has been led out initially by St. Clair County in a really innovative program with Chestnut, and this next contract would expand that very successful pilot so that it is also in Missouri. I really look forward to these options, and I really appreciate your consideration of this very innovative program. And with that, that concludes my report at this point. Thank you, Chair. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Talby. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Talby?
Yeah, can we go back to the chart of the vaccination rates? I've just got a quick question about the data.
One moment.
Yeah, sure. I guess my question is, it's for the counties and the city. Is that for the entire population or just people in excess of 18 years old?
Commissioner, I believe it is 18 years old and older. That information is compiled by Andrew Giassi from our partner organizations. And we're trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison, and I believe it does mean adults. And I'm sorry, it looks like we're having some...
No, no, yeah. Yeah, I wanted to make sure, because we don't have five-year-olds working for us, so...
We do not.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's better, and the numbers for our employees have gone up since the last time we spoke, so I don't want to be negative. It's a good development. I just want to make sure that the data is a fair comparison, so thank you.
I believe it is, but I'll confirm it.
I've got a quick question. I'm not sure if this is better for Talby or Jessica. I'm sorry, I can't get my camera to work. Is there any update on the impact that the... Some of the recruiting and incentive measures that the Board approved? I think it's been about a month, give or take, since we approved those. Are we seeing good numbers in more people coming in? And then, secondly, if we can get at some point, I think, a little more explanation on this part shortage that's impacting maintenance. I don't think I've heard that one. It might have been in my book, and I missed it, but I don't think I've heard that before. It seems to be, at least for me and maybe for the Board, a new problem. So if that's impacting things as well, if we can get a little more discussion on that at a subsequent meeting or later on in this one, those are the two things that I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll ask Jessica to address that in Ops. We've talked a little bit about it, so if you don't mind, I'll have her do it when she does her whole report. Is that fine?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's move to item number eight, reported the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee. Commissioner Zimmerman, will you give the report, please?
I can. Good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on August 20, 2021, immediately following the Board of Commissioners' special meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your Board Packet today under item number eight. During that meeting, there were no action items on the agenda for approval. However, several informational items were presented to the committee, including the IAD Audit Follow-Up Summary, Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2021, Internal Audit Status Report, Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2021, IAD SSO Status Report for the Second Quarter of the Calendar Year 2021, Treasury Safekeeping Quarterly Accounts Audit, ending March 30, 2021, Treasury Safekeeping Quarterly Accounts Audit, ending June 30, 2021, Quarterly Financial Statements for the Fourth Quarter, the Treasurer's Report, the Procurement Report, the Pension Plan Performance Updates as of June 30, 2021, as well as an update on the Risk Management Insurance Program. And this concludes the report for the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will move on to the report of the Operations Committee. The Operations Committee meeting was held on August 12, 2021, immediately following the Safety and Security Committee meeting. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your Board Packet today under item number nine. The Operations Committee is introducing four items on the Consent Agenda for your consideration today under item number 12, with the committee's recommendation of approval. These items include: A) The Contract Award for the Brentwood Facility and Bus Cleaning Service, Resolution Number 1152; B) The Contract Award for Central Facility and Call Ride Van Cleaning, Resolution 1153; C) Contract Award Track Maintenance Services, Resolution Number 1154; and D) The Operations Management Software HASTIS Upgrade, Resolution 1155. In addition, at the August Committee meeting, an operations report was provided by Jessica Mafford-Miller, Executive Director of Metro Transit, and this concludes my report of the Operations Committee. Are there any questions about any of the items, including those on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a report of the Safety and Security Commission... Committee, and I'll ask Commissioner Simmons for that report.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, excuse me, Herb, but I did ask Myra to read your report. Is that still what you would like done?
Yes, please.
For the Safety and Security Committee meeting, a virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on August 12, 2021, immediately following a meeting of the Executive Committee. The draft may... Excuse me. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the Board Packet materials under item number 10. The Safety and Security Committee is introducing two items on the Consent Agenda for consideration today under item number 12, with the committee's recommendation of approval. Those items include item number 12E, Contract Amendment Allowing for the Extension of the Grant Administration Agreement for Additional Metro Security Scorecard Updates and Implementation Assistance, Resolution 1156; and item number 12F, Memorandum of Understanding with the St. Louis County Missouri Police Department for Secondary Police Officers, Resolution Number 1157. In addition, at the August Committee meeting, Kevin Scott, General Manager of Security, provided an update to the committee regarding the acquisition of G4S Solutions by Allied Universal. This concludes the report for the Safety and Security Committee meeting.
Thank you, Myra. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can move on to item number 12, which is the Consent Agenda. There are six items on the Consent Agenda. The Contract Award for the Brentwood Facility and Bus Cleaning Service, Resolution 1152; Contract Award for Central Facility and Call Ride Van Cleaning, Resolution 1153; Contract Award for Track Maintenance Services, Resolution 1154; Operations Management Software HASTIS Upgrade, Resolution 1155; Contract Amendment Allowing for the Extension of the Grant Administration Agreement for Additional Metro Security Scorecard Updates and Implementation Assistance, Resolution 1156; and a Memorandum of Understanding with St. Louis County Missouri Police Department for Secondary Police Officers, Resolution Number 1157. I need a motion.
Chair, respectfully, I don't know if we just want to note that I would like to vote no on E, or we want to break it out and vote it separately, but I would like to vote no on E. So it would be... And I don't want to vote no on everything else. I think everything else is fine. So we can either note it that way, or we can consent to everything, subtract E, and then vote on E.
I think we need to pull item E and vote on that separately. So we will be voting... I need a motion to vote on A, B, C, D, and F, please.
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I can.
Myra, is this a voice vote or a roll call?
A voice vote sufficient.
Thank you. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, A, B, C, D, and F, please vote now. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. I will now need a resolution for item number E, the Contract Amendment Allowing for the Extension of the Grant Administration Agreement for Additional Metro Security Scorecard Updates and Implementation Assistance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Commissioners Zimmerman, would you like to address this?
It's just the same comments and why I voted no in committee. If you weren't there, just a... It's... I just think that WSP scorecard, at this point, we've got what good we can get out of it, and that it's kind of time to move beyond it at this point and focus on other things. And I think I was the only one to vote no in committee. I don't think I'll change anyone's minds, but I'd just like to, again, you know, for those reasons I stated and what we discussed in committee, I'd like to vote no on this, so...
Are there any other comments?
I have a comment. I kind of concur. I know what the vote was before, but I'm kind of like Commissioner Zimmerman. The scorecard has been hanging out there for a long, long time, and as I have expressed, there's some simple... Items on that scorecard that should have been fixed a long, long time ago. Why we continue to keep having the same issues and kicking the can down the road is beyond me. So I'm definitely reconsidering the vote on that.
Are you asking for... Do you want a voice vote, then, or do you want...
Yes, that's fine with me.
Are you making a motion for a voice vote?
Yes, I make a motion for a voice vote.
Is there... As opposed to...
I think we already have a...
Yeah, I think the motion's pending. You just need to ask aye or nay at this point, unless anybody wants to discuss it more.
Okay.
Can I make a brief comment, Chair?
I'm sorry. I'm asking whether or not you want a roll call vote, but normal consent goes with a voice vote. So I'm trying... If two are going to vote no, then the motion is not going to pass. So what I'm trying to determine is, do you want a roll call vote, or do you want a voice vote?
I think Talby asked for a question there. Talby, am I right?
Thank you. Yeah. Chair, is that... Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. So we are with this scorecard. We are rounding the bend. I would say that it is about keeping the integrity of several report cards, which have been very positive, and I think, as Kevin Scott would reflect, it has been a good guidepost. I think we are very close to having this concluded, but part of it is the integrity of our partner in this East-West Gateway. And Jim Wilde, they have worked very hard in conjunction with having the scorecard as a guidepost, and I would like to fulfill that commitment to Jim. So I would very much appreciate recognizing the work of our partners in moving this through, East-West Gateway specifically. And I think it would be valuable to finish out this contract, and I just respectfully ask for that consideration, very much taking into account that it is an imperfect process, and we are moving towards the conclusion. So that's just the extent of my comments. Thank you. So that's just the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you then. Since there is some concern about this, I'm going to make a motion for a roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, then we're going to take a roll call vote.
Commissioner, you would need a vote on your motion about taking a roll call vote, please.
Oh, all right, then we need a vote on whether or not we're taking a roll call vote.
Correct.
All those in favor, please signify by, is this a roll call vote on this vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Then I renew my motion for a roll call vote on item E, the Contract Amendment Allowing for the Extension of the the Grant Administration.
Second.
Thank.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
No.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
No.
The motion did not pass.
Thank you. Item number 13, The Agreement for Transit Client Engagement Services between Chestnut Health Systems, Inc. and Bi-State Development Agency. Resolution 1164, I would ask Kevin Scott for comments, please.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. Just so that you know, Chestnut Health is a private nonprofit, multidisciplinary health caregiver organization. They provide services, a complete scope of services, in health and healthcare and behavioral health services, both in Missouri and Illinois. What we recognize in the public safety field, and I think we've noted in our overview of the program that we provided in your package, is that an overall public safety structure certainly is not solely dependent on enforcement or security. There was a mental health impact on our system, there's an unhoused impact on our system, and in some cases, people just need to be connected with helpful resources. This is true here on the Metro Transit system itself, it's true within the broader region, as more law enforcement and public safety, excuse me, entities move toward this approach, and we think it's very positive. The recommendation that we've provided this morning is an extension of what has been a very successful program started by our colleagues in the St. Clair County Transit District. They initiated an agreement with Chestnut Health back in April this year, and they launched a pilot which encompasses a one-team deployment of individuals, trained individuals, clinician-based individuals from Chestnut Health, and they are focused on the Metro Transit system to provide impact to mental health issues, unhoused issues. Where they're focused on the diminishment of using transit centers for non-transportation-related needs. They're focused on helping us diminish the use of our vehicles for all-day riders. They're focused also on the mitigation of alcohol, drugs, and problematic behaviors. The transit centers is on the vehicles as well. So again, the pilot in St. Clair County focuses on the metro link alignment within the St. Clair County Transit District. Our proposal is to take the same business model under the same administrative oversight of Chestnut Health, because we are one fluid system, and the successful programs that we provide need to be fluid across the system. And we're proposing to expand that to the Missouri side with a concise focus on two major transit centers. The North Hanley Transit Center and the Civic Center Transit Center, and this would entail two teams of two individuals from Chestnut Health, so four staff members. One team focused on North Hanley, and one team focused on the Civic Center Transit Center, bringing in resources to provide people support that are in need. We're not so much focused on the, or being fluid on the system, but we're focused on those static locations at those major transit centers to affect the customer base, both on the metro link and the metro bus side. We're asking for your consideration in providing $353,520 to allow me to run a one-year pilot program here on the Missouri side in conjunction with a pilot program that's already been initiated on the St. Clair County side. And our hope is, and on the call with me today, as Mr. Roach mentioned, is Mr. Jim Wallace, he's the Business Development Director for Chestnut Health here in Missouri. Jim and I will begin almost immediately to promote this program in hopes that we can get corporate and regional support to continue it beyond the one-year pilot program. We've actually already started that process, we've made several contacts. And we're hoping that that influx of support, of regional support and corporate support, will not only just impact the Missouri pilot, but also the St. Clair pilot, where we can support both and marry both programs together. So that is our hope. That is our vision, and we would greatly appreciate your consideration. We think this will be a very innovative program, unlike none other in the country, and we think that it is going to make a substantial impact on rider safety and security. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Kevin. I just want to say that I think it's an incredible program. I think it's going to really change the face of security interactions with some riders who are in crisis. I support this wholeheartedly, and I appreciate the work that you and Chestnut have done on this. Are there other comments from the board? Justin?
Yeah, I think this sounds like a great, great idea and a great opportunity, and I would just add, and I don't know if some of you have maybe experienced this or were aware of this, but Kevin, I really commend you and your team, because this was frankly, when I I got the tour of the updated security system last year, this was probably the biggest eye-opening kind of development to me with respect to all the non-policing issues that our employees, our contract partners, and our law enforcement partners have to deal with, as you said, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, so there is a huge need for this. That doesn't always trickle up to the board, but I'm glad you and your team are taking a focus on this, and I think this is a really great idea to try this out, and hopefully we see a real impact from it, because it's a huge problem, and I think I learned a lot on the tour, but this was probably one of the big things that stuck out to me. So it's a huge need.
Herb, I have a question. How's it working out over here on the east side? Herb? I think you're muted.
Thanks, Derek. All the reports that we've been getting, it's been very successful. When we started this program, it was kind of slow to get started, of course, like anything else, but it's really been worth it. I do have a question for Kevin. Kevin, is any of the other partners contributing to the covering the cost of this? Or is this going to be solely on Metro?
For the first year, sir, the $353,000 would be a request directly for Metro. But as I mentioned, Jim and I have already started the process. We've met with several corporate entities, and we're looking for ways to continue this funding and grow the funding for the total program to support this same business model system-wide. But to answer your question, sir, the $353,520 would be a direct request from Bi-State.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Myra, did you get that?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much. The next item is item 14. Toby, is there any unscheduled business?
Chair Winmiller, want to reserve my time for Jessica's comments.
And we'll move right into the operations report and ask Jessica for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the public. Today, I'd like to provide a brief operations report, really focusing on what has very quickly become the most critical issue facing Metro Transit, and that's our workforce shortage. Commissioner Gladney, I'll also address our parts shortage, which is somewhat related. So here is a background of the situation. I want to first acknowledge the impact that our workforce shortages having on our customers, and apologize for the disruptions that you've experienced in service. It is very difficult when your bus doesn't show up, or when we can't provide that requested call-ride trip to you. This has been, I think, the most painful experience that we've had as a team and as a service over these last 18 months, and we are working very hard to stabilize service, so that the scheduled service that we commit to, we know that we can provide. We're also working to try and boost our workforce, so that we have the operators and mechanics and the electricians that we need so desperately to execute our service and to maintain our system. This is priority number one at this time. Here's the situation on the ground. Right now, we're missing a little less than 2% of our Metro bus trips. That number has actually come down a little bit, in large part because on September 6th, we made the decision to reduce Missouri Metro bus service by a little less than 5% trying to bring in our service level more closely in line with our available workforce. We're still utilizing our managers to operate vehicles on a daily basis, less so than we did previously. So those missed trips are now happening less often. But that does mean that we're operating less frequency on some of our routes. I believe one of our customer comments today addressed those frequent routes that we were so proud to launch in the fall of 2019 as part of Metro Reimagine, that created a framework of 15-minute frequency routes across the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County, has now been temporarily eroded, because we don't have the workforce to support that high frequency. We have, for the most part, maintained our geographic footprint, so that means where we were operating service, we're continuing to operate service. Now, as we look ahead to the coming months, we are planning an additional and a little bit deeper reduction that will be implemented on Monday, November 29. And that will bring our service level down about an additional 11%. So this is what we hope will be our valley. We'll provide a very detailed summary of that November 29 service change to you, Commissioners and to the public, at our October 15th service operations report. We're finalizing the details of that program now. In addition to these reduced service levels, we're also using supplementary strategies to keep the St. Louis region moving, and to provide some relief for customers whose trips have been missed, or customers whose routes are coming less frequently on a scheduled basis. We're utilizing our contract with Lyft, L-Y-F-T, our transportation network company. We have equipped our operations control center personnel and our managers in the field to summon Lyft vehicles when a trip is missed, and the frequency of the next trip is longer than 30 minutes. A customer is going to have to wait more than 30 minutes. We're acting swiftly to get that Lyft vehicle out there to help them complete that trip. We're also temporarily expanding our footprint of our micro-transit service under our Via Metro STL program, so that we can continue to provide that important geographic coverage across our 550-square-mile service area. I do want to provide an update on recruiting, and just to note, by the way, our recruiting goal and our service goal, it is our expectation that in spring/summer of 2022, we will be positioned to begin incrementally restoring the service. We are being very deliberate about how and where we bring that service level down, so that we can restore it on an incremental basis as soon as our workforce becomes available. So with some of the incentives that this commission improved, including our employee appreciation incentive, which I think is critical for reducing the attrition and maintaining the workforce that we have today, and I want to acknowledge that while our workforce number has come down and our attrition rate has increased, and this has been so difficult to deal with, the men and women at Metro, the operators who are out there showing up every day, also working overtime and working their day off or keeping us afloat. So I want to commend them for their hard work, and I am so pleased that we were able to offer that employee recognition incentive to them, and it is much appreciated, and it has done a great deal to improve morale and mood and engagement around our workforce and at all of our facilities. So thank you, Commissioners, for approving that. We're also offering a hiring incentive, and this is up to $2,000 for an incentive for our hard-to-fill roles, which includes our operators, mechanics, electricians, now some of our other positions, including transit security specialists. This is beginning to have an impact. There's a lag, though, in the time we push out these programs, and we actually have operators onboard and through a minimum six-week training period. We are working, in addition to the incentives, to promote our employment opportunities. Our marketing and communications team is doing a great job with making these job opportunities accessible, or making the public aware of them. We're also working heavily to leverage our partnerships with employment-based institutions, community organizations, faith-based institutions, our partners that serve special populations, including immigrant communities, trying to really push out these job programs. We're also hosting job fairs every week. Last Saturday, we hosted a job fair at our main shop facility. It was reasonably successful. Next week, we'll host a job fair on Thursday, October 7th, at our Civic Center Transit Center. It's actually a partnership with the City of St. Louis Health Department, which will offer the public and our team members vaccines alongside a Metro job fair. We're getting more candidates at these opportunities, and that's good. We've got to improve our timeliness at moving people through our pipeline, though. In order to obtain a job at Metro, you've got to produce a number of pieces of documentation. You have to go through things like a Department of Transportation physical, a drug test, and a background check. We're working to expedite that. We've just moved this week to add temporary staff, who is going to be focused explicitly on expediting the pipeline and keeping contact with our candidates as we move them through that process. Right now, I've got management team members working in stretch roles who are working that pipeline, calling those team members back, checking on the results of the physical. So I'm hopeful that this additional manpower is really going to help us. We're also expanding access to jobs at Metro, to populations that historically haven't been part of our pipeline. Right now, you've got to be 21 years old to work at Metro. You've got to have a high school diploma. We're working to drop that for our mechanics and our electricians down to age 18, and we can do that per our statutory requirements and insurance. It takes a couple of steps, but we think this is going to really help us attract young people who are coming out of high school and are coming out of trade school that we might otherwise lose if they become comfortable and committed to another employer before the age of 21. We're also working to reach out to more of those traditionally hard-to-reach populations, including immigrant communities, as I mentioned earlier. We have an existing program also with Southwest Illinois College and the St. Louis Community College System to tap into their high school attainment programs, because you've got to have a high school diploma or a GED to work at Metro, and so we're working to recruit those people who are going through those attainment programs and bring them on as part of our team. That's a small program, but it's intended not just to help us stabilize our workforce, but position Metro as a large public employer, as an employer of choice, especially for historically marginalized populations. Finally, long-term strategies that we're working on that are going to take a little more time to bear fruit. They're not going to impact the pipeline in the next six months, but they're needed. If we are truly able to- needed if we are truly able to move ourselves away from a constant churn and a constant workforce shortage back to a more stable workforce. And by the way, Commissioners, it's been about ten years since we have had a waitlist for people waiting to join our team as an operator or mechanic. For many decades, we had that, but it's been some time. We've got to change the nature of the job. We know that, not just within our industry, but within all industries, the workforce has different expectations today. They have expectations of a schedule that promotes a greater work-life balance. Transit schedules, because of the tempo of our business and the nature of our service, have historically been long. We have things like split shifts because we've got to run a lot of service in the morning and a lot of service in the afternoon and less later in the evening and less in the middle of the day. So we have been working and now have increased our focus on trying to shorten those shifts without making the service too unproductive and too expensive from a cost standpoint. We're working closely also with our partners in field security to provide additional safety and security, particularly for our Metro Bus operators. And we're receiving great feedback from our MetroLink operators, who in addition to our customers, feel safer working our system and riding our system. And now we're expanding that so that our bus operators know that we've got their back when they're out there in the field by themselves. We have two additional programs that are longer term that I'm very excited about. We're working with our partners at the Amalgamated Transit Union International to create mentoring programs for first our bus operators and then later our mechanics, and then apprenticeship programs, accredited apprenticeship programs for our mechanics, and then hopefully later our operators. We've got to do a better job of creating a pipeline and really communicating all that Metro has to offer as an employer. I want to address wage rates, since it was brought up so much in the public comments. We offer good jobs at Metro. We offer careers at Metro, and we're working to really promote that. This isn't a job. These are careers. Most of these careers come with guaranteed retirement income in the form of a pension for call ride operators. That's in the form of a 401K. Our wage rates are reasonably competitive, and our current labor contract, which this commission approved in early twenty twenty and expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Right now, we're bringing in our MetroLink operators at seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. They quickly reach top pay at twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Our paratransit operators are coming in sixteen seventy-eight and topping out at eighteen fifty-one. Bus operators, which is the biggest part of our workforce here at Bi-State Development, come in the door at seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents, but in less than five years, they're reaching top pay. Top pay, Commissioners, is twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Most Metro Bus operators today are at top pay, and for candidates that already come to us with the CDL, we're bringing them in the door post-training at nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. For our mechanics, it's twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, and our electricians, it's thirty dollars and sixty-seven cents. We recognize that wage rates have moved very fast across the industries around us, and we have to keep pace. This will, of course, be the subject of discussion in our upcoming labor contract negotiations with ATU and with the IBEW. As ever, we strive to maintain a balance between delivering the service our community needs and operating with a budget that we can sustain well into the future, with the resources we anticipate being available to us. That resource number has been very volatile over the last eighteen months. At the beginning of the pandemic, we held the line for some time on our workforce pipeline, anticipating actually that we would be in the midterm reducing our service level in response to available funding, including our sales tax proceeds and our past revenue. We've been delighted that we have been bolstered by three rounds of federal stimulus funding, and so we've got that pipeline moving again, but it's going to take us time to actually make a big enough dent such that we can restore service to pre-pandemic levels in calendar year twenty twenty-two. Before I address parts, I want to pause and invite your questions and comments on our workforce shortage.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Jessica, thanks for the initial report there. How many drivers would it take to get us back to where we were before the crisis?
So if we look, Commissioner Simmons, back to our, really, I think we should go back to June of twenty twenty-one, which is that ninety percent of pre-pandemic service, and that's what we think that we need on the ground right now, and that's what we think that we can sustain. We need about an additional one hundred and fifty operators across our modes. That's mostly bus operators. I want to note, though, that by the numbers, our biggest impact has been in call ride, our paratransit operators, and we're working not only to bolster that team, but also to try and shift customers who have an appetite and ability away from paratransit and onto fixed route service where possible. So hundred and fifty is the number.
Okay, and one last question. From the time you applicant gets in the door, gets hired and gets trained, what time period is that taken roughly inside the ballpark?
So six weeks, Commissioner, and I would add up to two weeks to that. From the time we say you can join our team, we've checked all of the boxes. They might have to wait a little while for a training class to begin. We're actually working to shorten that by providing additional supplementary training just to get them here in the door and on our payroll before they're on someone else's payroll.
Okay. Am I correct that there has been no cuts of service in the Illinois system?
You're correct, Commissioner Simmons. There have been no reductions in Illinois Metro Bus, apart from that which St. Clair County Transit District has requested. And I also want to note that we are running at eighty-nine percent of pre-pandemic MetroLink service, but we believe that that MetroLink service level is appropriate and sustainable.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Jessica, I just have one. So if an operator comes in the door, a new employee with a CDL, that's great. But if they don't, do they have to get that, and is that added, is that time added on?
Commissioner, that six-week time that I cited include, it reflects an operator who comes to us without a CDL. So the time for training is actually less for an operator who comes to us with a CDL. And I want to note, the rates I shared with you are post-training. They're a little bit less for training, but it's important to note that for our operator roles, you come in with a solid employment history and a high school diploma. We pay you to complete the training, including to obtain your CDL. And so these are our great jobs that someone can walk in off the street in very short order, be making on the order of twenty-seven dollars an hour with a fantastic health benefit package and a pension. This is, I think, one of, in addition to the primary business that we are, is keeping the St. Louis region moving. We're a good employer. We need to be an employer of choice because we provide quality job-supporting, family-supporting jobs.
One more question. What is the breakdown between full-time and part-time employees? I know we have split shifts, and I'm assuming that split shifts mean that you still are a full-time employee, you just have to split that time into two. But do we have part-time operators, and is there a path for them to become full-time, or do they want to stay part-time?
Yeah, so right now, all of our operators are actually full-time per our contract with Amalgamated Transit Union. We can operate up to six percent of our service with part-time employees. We currently have work established that we can use for part-time operators, and our part-time operator role is currently posted, and we're recruiting part-time operators. It's really helpful, in particular for our split shifts. Historically, it's been difficult for us to get enough part-timers to run up to six percent of that schedule, because the schedules are difficult to run. But part-timers are one of the great tools that we have to making those pieces of work that would otherwise be a long, what we call spread, a long day, possible. Right now, we're utilizing a lot of those very committed operators to work those, work those other pieces of their splits, and I want to commend those team members. Many of them are coming off their first piece of their run right now and getting ready to take a break, and then they're going to be back in the saddle and around the twelve to one P M. hour for their second part of their duty. It's a tough duty cycle. They're doing a great job, and we are working to make that more tenable for them.
Thank you.
Commissioners Zimmerman, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I had a kind of a comment and then a question. I appreciate you trying to give us some type of, you know, statistics or data to kind of put this in context. I would just ask, and I know you're already trying to fit, you know, twelve hours of work in a regular day, so I'm not trying to ask for more, but I think sometimes it's helpful if we could maybe get a little bit more interim performance data, other than just the quarterly stats, just so I think it would, I don't know about the other Commissioners, but it might help me. We've been hearing for a while now, performance has been eroding a bit, but just to put that in some type of context, again, if that's a huge effort, I don't want to take away from other things you and your staff are working on, but that might be, you know, just as we get, we were getting, you know, periodic updates on COVID vaccination rates between meetings, just so we can kind of know if situations becoming better or worse, essentially. That was one, just kind of request or comment. A question I did have, and we had discussed this in the past, but have we, have we done anything or put additional resources into helping with the, I don't know what the term is, but reduce the washout rate or improve the percentage of people that when they come in the door for a class that they end up being actual employees and drivers? Because I don't know if it's changed, but I remember in the past, we discussed that it was actually a pretty high rate of people that didn't complete that. So I guess that was just, I'm sure you thought of it, but just one question I had, if we can't get extra people in the door, maybe try to make sure those that are there and trying, a higher percentage of them become drivers?
Yes, we are. So in the time period before they actually make it through training, we've got management team members now who are calling and checking in on them, letting them know where we're at in the process. If they've gotten outstanding piece, we're keeping them in the pipeline, if you will, and nudging them along so that they don't become discouraged and perhaps look for something else. Now, when they're in training and then when they're out of training, we're working now in a mentoring program that would be an extension of our training program. Historically, you graduate training after twelve weeks. You take out a run and you're on your own. And the nature of this work, especially for operators, means that they're solitary most of the time, and so we'll be pairing them with senior operators. They already have been assigned to transit service managers. So transit service managers have cohort groups of our new operators emerged from training that they're looking after and checking in on, and soon we'll be pairing them with senior operators who are trained and equipped to provide them with peer-to-peer support, because that, the times where we're most likely to lose people are the pre-training and then that first year out of training. And so we're working to reduce the attrition right there. And on the stats, Commissioner, we would be pleased to provide a monthly report, if that's adequate. We're doing this anyway. That includes trends in our absenteeism in attendance, our workforce pipeline, as well as our service performance, things like missed trips and ridership.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, it's just that, or if there's any type of significant developments, right? If all of a sudden, next week, something drastically changes, you know, I would appreciate in addition an email, some type of performance indicators or data to go along with it. So that's my only point.
Got it. We can do that. Thank you for your interest. Any other questions on workforce?
Yes, Jessica, on the, on the riot, when they say that they're showing up late or they're standing out waiting anywhere from thirty minutes to almost an hour, what's really causing that problem? Whereas that they get the last minute information, why they say they don't really get the information to, it's well too late, and they're late for work.
So what happens, Commissioner Brown? That, those are the up to two percent of trips that we have been missing that I referenced earlier. So each day on any given route, we have a number of different operators assigned to that route, and if someone isn't here, they don't show up for work, or maybe we don't have an operator assigned to that, which now that's not happening as often, then we, then we're not able to field that scheduled trip. What we've been doing, and our performance has improved tremendously over the last, now almost four weeks since we reduced service on September sixth, what we've been doing is if we know we can't fill a run, we push that information out through the transit app so that that scheduled trip doesn't show up and that customer can get an alert. We're also pushing out information about our supplementary services. I mentioned Lyft earlier so that we can try and provide that customer a ride. If it's a relatively frequent route and the next bus is going to be along in fifteen minutes, it's not as big a deal, but it is a big deal if it's on an infrequent route in the periphery of our service area in some of our low-density markets. That becomes a big problem. But even if it is a fifteen-minute delay, I recognize that that's the difference between being late to work and being on time for work and maintaining employment for our customer. So that's why we are trying to produce this reduced, and it's painful to cut back on services. It's difficult for our customers, but effective our November twenty-ninth service change, I'm confident that we'll be able to support that service level for the coming months as we ramp up with our employment. So our customers will know that bus is coming.
All right, thank you.
All right, I just have one quick thing, Jessica, just based on what you just said about the pushing out notifications on the, on the app.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it'd be ideal in a perfect world if everyone had smartphones, if everyone who had a smartphone had the transit app, but my guess is there are some people, especially folks that maybe rely on this for work, who either don't have that kind of a phone or don't have the app. Are we, are we looking at additional ways to make sure folks know there's been a service interruption, there's been a service change, or, you know, even things as simple as the old-fashioned way, making sure paper notices are posted, things like that, because I could, I could imagine folks not having the app and not following Bi-State on social media or not reading the newspapers, not necessarily knowing that there's been a service interruption. Are we looking at, you know, old-fashioned ways of making sure folks are getting that information?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So Commissioner Gladney, the notifications that I was just referencing are for when we miss a trip that day. So in other words, it's not a scheduled service change. It is, we didn't have somebody show up and we don't have someone on the extra board or doubling over to actually take that run out. So we're getting, you know, hours if that notice. And so, but you can get that information even without the app. We have now next bus times, and the information is on all of our bus stop signs. So if you just have a telephone, you can call and get that automated next bus time. So we're pushing this schedule adherence in through that channel. So that's on the last minute kind of thing. But on the major service change, like what I mentioned, we're doing on November twenty-ninth and what we just did on September sixth, we use all of these digital channels, but they are certainly no replacement for our good old-fashioned rider alerts and that signage that goes up two weeks in advance across our system. So on every bus, every train, every platform and every transit center, there are signings that clearly indicates this is the date and these are the routes that are changing. And then I would also add that our customer service team has the scheduled information, but then they've also got the information so they know if a bus is out there that's scheduled or not in real time, and they're able to route and support those customers in real time. And they do that via telephone, text messaging, chat messaging, and email. And they're working very hard right now to make sure our customers have the best and most frequent and most up-to-date information. Yeah, so when we talk a lot about technology and we spend a lot of time pursuing different technology contracts in this board forum, but I never want to give the indication that we expect that our customers have cell phones or smartphones or credit cards or even bank accounts. We continue to support them with paper information and with staff actually out in the field to support them and talk to them.
Thank you for that answer, and I just wanted to make sure that was on the mind. And I also agree completely with Commissioner Zimmerman. As much reporting now on this as we can get helps, because I think this is probably the number one issue right now. So thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Any other questions on workforce? And if not, I can address parts and equipment. So as I'm sure you are probably all aware, we globally are experiencing tremendous impacts to supply chains, and that includes the availability of some of our parts, anything with microchips. We're also outside of global supply chain undergoing repopulation and reconstruction of our own procurement team here at Bi-State Development. All of these impacts have culminated to create part shortage for certain pieces of equipment. So today, we have much more of our fleet set down at our facilities than we otherwise would. And I'll tell you candidly, if we were running a hundred percent of our pre-pandemic service today and we had all of the operators and the mechanics that we needed, we would be missing service because of our parts and vehicle shortages. we would be missing service because of our parts and vehicle shortages. And so we are working with our suppliers to support them. We are having conversations about making some changes to our fleet replacement strategies, even to shift away from some of our vehicle types that have traditionally been hard for us to replace. Our transit asset maintenance team is working hand in glove with our procurement team, and in fact, we have some of our vehicle maintenance team members who have now jumped in and are working as an extension of the procurement team to improve our parts pipeline. I am confident, all things, as long as our shortage doesn't get worse from here on out, that as our workforce ramps up, we'll have the fleet to support that. I do want to note, though, this commission approves our vehicle purchasing contracts on a routine basis. I want to note that we've got two pretty significant shortages, and I do not have delivery dates for our next coloride pair transit vans. These are heavy-duty coach-on-chassis vehicles. We've had a long-time struggle actually getting the chassis and the equipment to support that fleet. We're continuing to await new delivery dates, but we're also having conversations about making adjustments in our fleet and possibly acquiring smaller vehicles for some of our duty cycles so that we can get them more reliably. So stay tuned for more information on that. And then finally, our electric buses. We were hoping to have six additional 40-foot Gilig battery electric buses here this month, actually. And those have been delayed, and unfortunately, we do not yet have a delivery date for that. And this is for the parts that actually go into manufacturing these vehicles. We're certainly among friends in this vein. The parts and vehicle shortage is plaguing our entire industry. We'll continue to keep you posted on this at our October 15th Operations Committee. In addition to talking about November 29th service, we intend to provide you with an update on our capital programs, including our fleet replacement strategy with its projected vehicle delivery dates. Does that satisfy your question, Commissioner Gladney?
It does, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other questions I may answer for you this morning? Hearing none. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. That was the last item for reporting on our regularly scheduled meeting, so Myra, I will ask for future meeting dates.
I would like to note that the Safety and Security Committee meeting scheduled for October 7th has been canceled. The next Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting will be held on Friday, October 15th at 8:30. The next Operations Committee meeting will be also held on Friday, October 15th, immediately following the audit meeting. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, November 19th at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. I need a motion that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal confidential or privileged matters as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal and D10 Auditors. Do we have a motion?
FOMO.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. We'll now go into executive session.
Thank you. We're ready to convene open session.
Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting Friday, October 20, October 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 25th, 2021? Executive session as a closed record?
FOMO.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, including the draft management and performance audit by Infrastructure Management Group St. Louis Metro Transit Resolution 1158, the draft office supply account audit report Resolution 1159, the draft accounts payable data serve audit report Resolution 1160, the draft ticket vending machine audit report Resolution 1161, the draft True North IT penetration report Resolution 1162, and draft True North SEAD assessment report Resolution 1163.
FOMO.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Is there any further business? Seeing none, I would request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you all. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.